Well, good evening. I'm gonna go ahead and start. I have been reaching out to Councilman Monday. I talked with him.
He's here.
He had a death in the family. I haven't been able to reach Ms. Harris or Ms. Hutchinson. But I guess I'll go start this meeting. Ms. City Clerk, you call the role, please.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor McLennan.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Martin. Councilor Kat.
Here.
Councilor Crum.
Here.
Councilor Harris. Councilor Holt.
Here.
Councilor Hutchinson. Councilor Mohammed.
Present.
Councilor Monday. Councilor Rowley. Councilor Murray.
Here.
Councilor Pulliam.
Here.
Councilor Willis.
Here.
Thank you, sir.
With one being present, I'm gonna go ahead and start this meeting. Did you get Tracy?
Yes, I did. First hand.
I have two items I need to get taken care of. First off, I'll start off with last councilman you all gave me permission to negotiate for these three EMS ambulance services. I mean ambulances. It was all through Arkansas certified. They all contain the heart monitor. Can you all hear me?
You're breaking up.
Yeah, it's very, very muffled.
Is this better? This better? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Oh, clear, yes. Thank you.
Actually, I want to start out with the purchase of these three new ambulances. Last councilman, you all gave me permission to negotiate with the individual to get these three new ambulances. I went back and I talked with them and we negotiated a price of $190. Would that include 2015 Mercedes, 170 van with 123,000 miles, 148,000, and 125,000 miles? Also, these ambulances include the automatic stretcher, the cardio monitor, and the A-Wind system for communication. They all have been Arkansas certified. And they have $190,000 for all three of them. And which you can't even buy a brand new one with no equipment for that price, that amount. As well as Sean has had an opportunity to go over and examine each unit. He have done a test, diagnostic test, compression test, test drive, the whole nine yards. And actually, this will give us what we need to be a little more successful in the future. We're having adequate transportation in our EMS system.
Well, I mean, I'm not familiar with ambulance and values of ambulances and the appreciation and all that on ambulances. But what was the comments from our fire department leadership?
Well, this is actually, I met with the fire chief as well as Chief Rose and Sean. They are chief of county. They all looked at and they all agreed on. They wanted me to come back and come to you all, which I did. We negotiated the price and that was the amount for the ambulance service.
Is there anything comparable or somewhere we could compare to our price offer to make sure?
Well.
In the ballpark?
Well, let me tell you this. First off, they're all 2015. And the units are only $50,000 per unit. If you look at buying a basic ambulance unit without the cardio monitor, the automatic stretchers, or the radio system in there. A new one, everybody new one today.
Just for basic bare bone?
Bare bone, $225,000, $225,000 just for one, a bare bone one.
Okay. Well, the one thing about it, I mean, we if we're like I say, just a bare one, you get the equipment and stuff, which is pretty expensive, especially if you got a track frame and all that. So if we, I don't believe we, you know, getting better than that out there. So because I mean, there's none out on the park. More or less. Okay. And let me ask you this one quick question, Mayor. Are EMT base, are they already pair made certified?
They pair made certified. They're Arkansas certified. And they diesel engine as well.
And see, all that means something. And see, that's a plus. Because they're already pair made certified. It doesn't mean you have to go through all of that. I think it's a win-win situation.
Well, the one thing that's going to be of great benefit to the city is fact that we can put these in a rotational basis. We won't have near as much wear and tear on each individual unit. So we can spread that out over longer periods of time. We'll get more useful life out of this by adding this to our inventory. And I think in the long run, it'll definitely save the city some money.
Now, CEM, CEM, are they going out of business?
Well, Lifeline and Riverside is going out of business. I can't tell you the details on CEM. But I know they got to still cover the whole county. And we got to look out for West Memphis, so.
I understand, I understand. I just what about all their personnel that they have?
Oh, they gone. Actually, one of them working for us part-time. But all of them right now, they all gone as well.
Alrighty.
Did we establish the age of those?
2015.
He may have like mere vestiges.
It's 2015.
Okay.
And I can give you the mileage. The mileage on each one, 123,000, 148,000, and 125,000, they diesel engines.
That's good, okay.
Quick, Melody just texted. She's trying to get in.
Let me get Nick to send a link real quick.
From a financing standpoint, before Frank left with his illness, he had set up a line of credit with Fidelity as part of the Duke Capital Outlay Plan for the general fund. So you may want to say you'll spend a hundred thousand cash, borrow a hundred thousand from the line of credit. But, you know, you'll have a little time to make that decision on why you want to do it.
Then again, Trace, how do you do?
Before Frank went to the hospital, you know, the council had already established the capital outlay plan for the general fund, that $1.3 million. But he went ahead and set up a $1.2 million line of credit with the local bank. So, you know, if you want to pay cash for all of it, or if you want to split it up, pay a hundred thousand cash, borrow the other hundred, you know, you've got plenty of options on how you might want to look at this.
I mean, would you offer gifts?
Well, of course, from the liquidity standpoint, you know, with the unknowns that are still out there. Yeah, I'd rather go ahead and split it up, a hundred out of each one.
Okay, so split it up for how long payment?
It would just be an annual payment. Once the revenue stream restabilizes itself. Yeah, you'll make the final decision then. But for right now, we're just going to set it up for a one-year note.
How much are we talking monthly? Or are you just gonna? Are we financing it through one of our banks, or how are we doing it?
Yeah, we already have a $1.2 million line of credit with the local bank. So we will use it for half of it and set it up with a one-year payment. As soon as things settle down and revenue stream stabilizes again, get us back to where we were before all this happened, then we'll just pay it off. So that revenue stream should come in about $1.2, $1.3 million a year.
I think personally, I think it's a wonderful idea. I believe we are getting more bang for our buck in this situation with everything, with the ambulances. Three of them fully equipped, not been very old, not a lot of miles. And not a lot of, you know, I'm sure it's been quite a bit of usage, but not a whole lot of miles. So I think that we should move forward with it.
I think it's a great idea due to the fact that with the new pair advantage you all just allowed me to hire. We can actually run four units and that fifth unit will be there to alternate with other units. So every vehicle just going to be ran constantly every day.
Well, like I say, the ambulance, you know, at 144, that's assuming it's only three a year, only 50,000 miles a year for an ambulance, it's probably pretty low. Diesels traditionally don't even get broken in really well if they've been well serviced until they had a couple hundred thousand miles. You can get three, four hundred thousand miles out of diesel, that's too much trouble if it's serviced correctly. And the staff at shop will handle that.
Tell me this one thing, how much will the cosmetic cost? I know we're going to have to reconfigure all the wardings and all that. Have we looked into how much cosmetics? I know it's not going to be that much, but we need to go ahead and put everything on the table while we're there, while we're here.
I did not ask the fire department what the lettering would cost. But you're right, I don't expect it to be very much at all. Probably less than $5,000 to all three of them if I had to ballpark it. But I'll get you, we'll get a definitive number before you let you know.
I make most weeks it.
Councilman, Councilman. Councilman, before you, can you add to that motion? Just do a four, it's $190 right now, but just do a four, $200,000 with the basis of what Ms. Mohammed just added. And if it don't be $10,000, $5,000, we can already got the money covered.
Well, we have to make, put in form motion, you know, just if, in case we get $10,000, add to it.
For cosmetics?
Yes. Cosmetic.
I guess you can use that word. I'm a woman, I consider.
Who said? And before I call the role, let the broker show that Councilman Monday just made.
And Ms. Hutchinson is trying to get on. She hasn't.
Has she joined in by phone?
Actually, the communication.
All three by? Opposed? It passes? The second I have, you already.
Do we have an audience number for that? Oh, that's not an audience.
Not a mission.
Okay. All right, I'm slow today.
Let me go through this. You all know we received $186,503 additional money to the community development block to be used for COVID-related reasons. And one of the things I did, I pretty much talked to the majority of all of you all to get what you all feel on what you want to do with some of this money. As well as this Friday, we had a webinar with HUD to see what we can and what we can't use it for. So I proposed to some of you all, we want to spend $10,000 to go into Delta Neighborhood Action. By asking before we get to the organization, what they told me on Friday is that the city, the city still has to administer these programs. And just like for instance, Ms. Mohammed said, well, I got $10,000 worth of bills. We're still running in partnership through Delta Neighborhood Action Council. By actually, the city will have to pay or for us to get reimbursed the money back. The money would be, the money, the physical money would be made at 15. But they said we couldn't go and pay these things now. And they guaranteed that the money would be back in their account by the 15th of May. And that came from HUD. So what I presented to them, $10,000 to the Delta Neighborhood Action Council so that we can help to pay $100 on utility bills for individuals that have been affected by the COVID-19. $10,000 with the Good Neighbor Center to buy.
Excuse me, Ms. Clinton, before we, I'm sorry to interrupt, before we get any further. Could you give us a timeline on that starting March or starting when, until when?
Excuse me, ma'am?
I'm sorry, he said this money is going to be for those individuals who's been affected by the COVID-19. Could you give us the date so whenever I start taking applications, I'll know that it can't be no further back than this particular date. Is it going to be March?
Well, no, it's going to be April. Because April was the month that the city and the utilities department decided to not cut anyone off and waive the discounts on the bills. So it started.
So per April 1st, I can take applications on bills that were due April 1st up till?
Yes.
May?
Yes, shut up. Yes, ma'am. From April and May that had shut off notices that they have been affected by the COVID-19. So I mean, it's more than them just saying, well, my light bill is due and they have had to have a reason with COVID-19. As well as another as well as another $10,000 that go to help small businesses and utilities, which are going to be administered through our main street. And that helped be in small businesses in the city of West Memphis from April and May. That may be behind the utility bill, they'll pay up to $200 on those bills to help our small businesses. $10,000, we will work with Good Neighbor. And $10,000, we will work with Hope House and buy food for our citizens. Hopefully, we asked that they all buy those foods, be the Walmart, Save-A-Lot, Big Star, Corbin's so the tax dollars will remain here in the city of West Memphis. But they'd be administered through the city as well. But we will partner with those two organizations. Also, we have spent $10,000 on purchasing PPEs, which are gloves, masks, and sanitizers to make sure that our citizens have what they need. If I'm encouraging them to stay in when the state is open or be safe, we need to make sure that they have what they need to keep themselves safe. And that's gloves, masks, and sanitizing.
Tell me this one thing, Mayor McLennan, I'm sorry. But now, how would these, how would this PPE be distributed to our citizens?
We're going to start with, we're going to start with the citizens and maybe with the seniors. I'm sorry, we're going to start with the seniors. And our fire department is going to help out with that, making sure we go into senior citizens, neighborhoods, and communities to make sure the ones that don't have them, have them. And what we do, we allow them to call in as well. And then for our seniors, we may do a line out here at the civic center to let them come through. We'll give them what they need for their families.
All right. What's going to happen? People will ask this question, what is going to happen once we get this PPE in? We are going to announce that they will be given out at the civic center for seniors, first of all, on this particular date and time. And of course, you have to keep your six feet distance on somebody that can come in at a time. Is that how it's going to?
Well, actually, for the citizens, the citizens, I'm sorry, actually for the seniors, we go into the senior neighborhoods. And we're going to work with the house and director to make sure that they let them individuals know. And we'll make sure we give them out up there before the regular individuals. They will come, we probably do a line at the civic center and probably another location within our city so that those individuals will be able to get one as well.
I guess I'm a little bit confused. The senior neighborhoods, are you talking about like over off Ingram?
Ingram, Jackson, and different places like that.
Right, okay, I'm understanding now. Thank you. Yeah, I understand.
Also, I'm kind of rushing. I think the thing is I got one minute. Also, we'll be purchasing and providing a room for homeless people or people who are affected by the COVID-19. For example, if someone in your house gets affected, they'll be able to go to our local hotels that are not allowing anyone to use them at this time. And be able to have a room until they get completed or someone living on the street will pull out their house.
Are these for residents only?
Yes, ma'am. This is for West Memphis only. $6,000 will go toward families in transitions. And they will help with distressed families in our city dealing that has been affected by COVID-19 and infected. But also, this still would be administered through the city of West Memphis. So we won't be writing a check to families in transition, Good Neighbor Center, Hope, the Hope House.
Okay. Mayor McLennan?
President.
Hey, I heard Wayne.
There you go, Wayne.
Okay. City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
Mayor?
I'm here.
City Treasurer Martin.
Girls.
Councilor Kat?
Here.
Councilor Crum? Councilor Crum?
Well, hold on a minute. What exactly do we voting on now?
Calling role.
We're calling role again, sir.
Are we voting on the mayor's distribution of funds?
No.
No, sir. We are calling the role again.
We're reestablishing the board, Wayne. Just say here.
Councilor Harris?
I'm not there.
Yes, sir, you are. Councilor Holt?
Here.
Councilor Hutchinson?
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilor Mohammed?
Present.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilor Monday?
Here.
Councilor Murray? Councilor Murray?
Here.
Councilor Pulliam? Thank you, sir. Councilor Willis?
Here.
Thank you, sir.
Well, if one being present, I'm gonna go ahead and get started. I'll start that back over. We all start fresh, because we do have Councilwoman Hutchinson with us. This past Friday, we had a webinar with HUD. You know, we had got allocated $186,503 to deal with any issues dealing with the COVID-19. So what I did, I went through all the things that we all had proposed. I pretty much talked to many of you all on what you all want to do with some of this funding. The first thing, these organizations that we can partner with, but the program will have to be administered through the city. And pretty much what they saying, that we can partner with the Delta Neighborhood Action, Good Neighbor Center, Hope House, Feminine Transition, and Sure Collaborative. But definitely, it will have to be paid through the city. What I mean by that, if Good Neighbor Center bought $10,000 for food, they would have to let Killa know and Killa would actually have to purchase the food. He can write a check out to the Good Neighbor Center for them to do that. So the city still has to administer, and I have five people in place. I'll go back through the totals again. There were $10,000 for in partnership with the Delta Neighborhood Action Council to pay up to $100 on individuals' light bill who have been affected by the COVID-19. Starting from April 1st through May. Second, we've gone to administer through the main street the small business utility help will pay up to $200 on small businesses' utility bills. And that would be administered through Main Street. Second, $10,000 to leave in a partnership again with the Good Neighbor Center and Hope House, $10,000 apiece, to be able to buy food to make sure that the citizens of West Memphis have food. And while I'm asking them to them to purchase all the food from either the Walmart stores or Kroger's or Big Star, Save-A-Lot, any of our grocery stores so that tax revenue can remain with the city. Also, $10,000 going within the purchasing department to purchase PPE for the public, which are masks, gloves, and sanitizer. The first people who would take priority would be our senior who doesn't have masks. Y'all hear me? It would take the purchase for our senior citizens to make sure that they have masks, gloves, and sanitizer. And then after that, we would go to our individuals here in our city. Make sure that they have, we would set up probably the Eugene Wood Center to have a car drive to to make sure we provide those individuals with the PPEs that they need. Our fire department will work with us to go within the senior communities, which is on Ingram, Jackson, and wherever else in the city, or any houses recognized to have a center to make sure that they have them. Also, our city will also be working with our hotel owners. As you know, the governor has shut down all hotels right now in the city where people coming through cannot use them. So I spoke with some of the owners, well, Mr. Patel, who owns a lot of the hotels right now, to make sure we can house anyone that's homeless and a family that has been affected by COVID-19, whereas you got five people in the household, one has became positive, we can get that individual out of the household into a hotel until they are quarantined for 14 days. Also, $6,000 goal would be in partnership. Once again, let me say partnership, because we can't give them this money. We have to work in partnership with them, but it has to be administered through the city.
I, I, I'm sorry, please hold you thought. I'd like to ask you a question on the hotel. And I think that's a really wonderful idea to put that patient who has been tested positive, put them up in the hotel for 14 days. But now, as far as food and all those type things, how will they be fed? Do we want to use another source of this money to feed them as well?
Well, we have already partnered with the Good Neighbor Center to provide food for individuals who are tested positive already.
So they go to the hotel. So let me get it clear, because you know, people are going to be asking. I want to make sure I'm referring it onto the general public the correct way. So if a person in a household has been tested positive with the COVID, we can put them up in a hotel and this is how council decides to do it today. And as far as them being fed, the organization that's already feeding will supply that person or persons with food in the hotel as well. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am. Because you actually giving both of those organizations $10,000 apiece to buy more food right now.
Okay, right, right. To buy the food and prepare the food and then take it to the person?
No, not prepare, but providing with food.
Hmm.
Not, not, not fix it, but we're providing with a box of food.
They want to cook.
Well, some of the food.
Thank you, Mayor McLennan.
Not cookable. Some of the cereal, some of the different things like that. And I hope that their families as well can drop something off, but it gets them out of the house with the family.
I understand that, I understand that.
Like non-perishable products, things like that?
Yes, ma'am. Also, we were partnership with Families in Transitions up to $6,000. They have families, distressed families, like for instance, someone wanted to pay their rent. They lost their job due to COVID-19. We can place them. I mean, well, Families in Transition, we actually place them. But the city will pay up to $6,000 to Families in Transitions to make sure those people have somewhere to stay. Or whatever they go through, they distressed families process. Also, Sure Collaborative is one to feed up to 800 of our senior citizens. They will prepare the food and they will deliver. And that may be something I may be to work with them. If we get some homeless people in a hotel, because I also got to keep in mind, we got the Eighth Street Mission. We got Families in Transition that will be helping. So I doubt if we get that many distressed people going to hotel. So that may be additional funded to go to any other, to the Families in Transition or through the city to make sure we help those individuals. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, just, let me ask you these questions, because I know one of the city programs, programs that they were feeding the kids was stopped. But I think boys and girls, they still feeding, I think they're still feeding. We give them something, you know, because they come.
I'm sorry, my phone rang. I had, it made me leave the meeting for a moment.
What I, what I was saying is, you know, one of the few programs stopped, you know, feeding kids. I mean, for the program. And I was wondering, because I knew one of the boys and girls, they still doing dinner and the snack. And I don't, they all still feeding. So I was wondering if we can generate, we can give them anything else.
Well, let me, let me explain to you how I was told about that, because those food programs get paid through the state. The HUD explained to me that we cannot done it. I know Councilwoman Hutchinson wanted me to do the school supply. I had done this as well, but they boarded that up. They said we can't do that because they have anything to do with the COVID-19 crisis.
Who said that?
HUD. So we did a webinar Friday through the state.
Okay, so basically, let me ask you, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, go ahead and test what you asking. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's just what I was saying, because I know one program is stopped. That's what we have.
Mayor, let me ask you, so pretty much, Mayor, the list that you gave us. who, who came up with everything that on, on this list?
Well, that was a list from the administration to the council's approval. As well as I added your six thousand dollars to help buy school supplies. And when we went through the HUD webinar with the people from HUD from Little Rock, they said that was one thing that we cannot do because of other funding that was available for the schools to do different things like that. And backpack supplies, things like that was not approved by HUD.
Okay, let me, let me, and let me be clear, because I know every, I did not, I had not talked with the county council. So my, my standing on that was, when I initially talked with you, was wanting to do something. There's nothing in this plan that had anything to do with the children first aid in our city. Children have been affected, much as elderly. Uh, and I don't even know if we want to get into age group, with, with, with who has been affected. Now, I understand what, what you're telling me is that through a webinar, you were informed that anything that we're trying to do, whether it be, my idea was to fill backpacks up to get ready for school in August, which would be a relief for families. Or either, even if it's going to be, um, uh, remote learning at home. It was something for the children, but being as though you're telling me that's X out, that's, that's one thing. I'm gonna go back to my original question. Everything that's on this list, who, who came up with everything that you're, you're presenting to us today? What, what did these, where did these come from?
Let me answer that question. It comes from having conversations with all of you on the council. Many of the individuals on the council gave their ideas. That's the first thing. I've been calling you ever since Friday evening, since I got off of the webinar, to explain to you what they had said about that one particular thing. Now, it's not me saying we shouldn't do it. It's them saying they are not going to reimburse the city back to it. And that's HUD, the one who is over that program. All right.
I, I really do understand that school supply idea, which, uh, Ms. Hutchinson has a wonderful idea thinking of the children. But we have so many vendors and donors that's going to be giving school supplies, that do give school supplies, that are partnered with all the various schools, and they feel, uh, so many organizations. Every single year, we have more than an abundance of everything that's, that's needed as far as school supplies. So maybe that's how HUD came up with not including the school supplies in there. But I also think that when we're talking about helping families, that is inclusive of the children. Because a, a, a man individual, a woman individual, it's not a family. A family is considered a unit, a husband or a spouse or whomever, and children or... So that is still helping the children, providing the food, paying the bills, things of that nature. But it's just not per se titled as, uh, school supplies or whatever. But when you talk about helping families, that does include helping the children as well, who will certainly benefit from all of this. Well, Miss, let me say this, Mr. Ryan, and back to, and even so, uh, Mayor, so I can be clear. I know it sounds as though the idea was not distinct, was not school supply. I would, the, the, the original idea, when I asked the mayor to consider, was what could we do specifically for children in our city that would have, that would tie into it? And, and what you're just saying, Mr. Ryan, you're absolutely correct. Uh, you know, the children, children are a part of the nation. So I do, I do want to be clear with my co-council. I, it was never about school supplies per se. My original idea was how could we support remote learning with the children at home? Um, and I, the, the school supplies was very least, least on the list. I thought about, I, I even threw that to Mayor, uh, backpacks on the go. Filling backpacks with different items that, that would be conducive to children, perhaps some learning, maybe personal items, uh, depending on the age group. So it wasn't so much, it wasn't so much as, you know, let's do a school supply, a school drive. Um, I, I originally wanted to see how the city could support remote learning and at home learning. So I, I just wanted to let you guys know, I, it's not, it wasn't about paper pens, pens or backpacks, because we don't even know when or when or if the children will get vaccinated. But, uh... But let me ask you a quick question. At home learning, the way they're doing the at-home learning now is basically, uh, like, some, something like Zoom and different things of that nature. Are you talking at-home learning? Perhaps buying a, a phone for a child, or a computer, or an iPad? So they can get online to see their teachers? Because everybody, every child doesn't have that. That's the only way I can see promoting luck right now. Because... And, and that's the word, remote learning, that I used, Mr. Ryan. That's what I was saying, because that's what they're doing, remote learning at home. Uh, certainly, I, I know, and, and even with this amount of money, we would be able to, uh, purchase all, um, gadgets to get, get whatever, you know, they're using at home. But, but, but again, that, that was a part of my train of thought, you know? What if, what if there was something that we could do to... I actually said to the mayor, Mayor, uh, and you can concur with this, I, I asked you, could we partner with the school board with this money? That was my original question. And, uh, your response was the school board pretty much handles the children, you know, and we'll stick with what we'll...
For some learning, the learning thing.
You told me?
In the, in the, in the learning process, exactly.
Right, right. Well, and with children, so, like I said, it, it didn't come out, it didn't come off as we wanted to, let's just do some backpacks and pens, pens, or whatever. It was about trying to support the remote learning, or however they're learning right now. How could the city partner? And, and that's how it began. So I did want to make that clear. Uh, being, being as though we are looking at partnership, uh, with the different organizations in our city that, that have been tried and true, um, that was my, my initial thought. So we spent enough time on that. I did want to clear it up, that I was not necessarily wanting to do a go back to school, uh, you know, uh, backpack thing. But certainly, how could we, how could we, the city support where the children are now and what their differences? That was it. But as you're saying, I know everything has been done through HUD in terms of HUD, um, policies and guidelines there, and that, that is something that they will not entertain.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Which, which, and what you're presenting today, you actually wrote this up before you did the webinar. Is that correct?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so everything pretty much that you came up with here, that you're presenting to us, this is permissible with HUD?
Yes, it is. Now, let me, let me, let me add this, uh, Ms. Hutchinson. Uh, it ain't the mayor saying no. I want to get, I want to make sure you understand that. It's not me saying no, because I had six thousand dollars to go toward what you were trying to do. So it's not me saying no. If they said yes, I'd be talking about that program right now. That's the first thing. They are the one that said in the webinar that, that the Department of Education for Learning or whatever, anything with school supplies would have anything to do with COVID-19. It's not me. If they said yes, it wouldn't bother me. Also, I want you to keep in mind, it's still a hundred and nine thousand dollars in that budget. And now if you all came up with a plan that y'all felt y'all wanted to do something with, then you can present that. We're presenting back through HUD like we just did with this guy. Actually, let me show you what else I had in that plan. I actually had in that plan trying to incentivize some housing being built in the communities and saying, well, it was gonna be for COVID-19 families. Get what they told me on that? I can do it. So it wasn't just everything that I presented to them, they passed it, your thing was the one thing. It was actually the housing and the school supplies. So when you come up with another idea, it's still a hundred and nine thousand dollars you could bring to the table, and then we would present it for HUD, and that they would, uh, approve it, and the council then approve it. We fine with it. It's no problem with me. But it's not me saying no.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? I, I, Melvin, I don't know if you agree with that one or not, but if not, then I, I'll just go with it. But I won't make another suggestion.
Well, I personally would like to see a list.
Excuse me?
Look at it.
There.
You know, I'm, we're, we're kinda in the dark out here, not knowing exactly. I would like to look at something on paper that I could actually vote on and make sure I do the right thing.
But, but can I, can I say this? Can I say this? Can I just say this if y'all don't mind?
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, and, and one of the things that I actually need to do, I mean, just looking at this, and Mayor, if you don't mind, if you just, if you can get a copy of what all we can spend on, that'll give us an idea. That's what we can spend on. And since what you, the information that you've gotten so far and the destination was on this, now I would like to make, I'd like to make a amendment to it on the Good Neighbor Center and on the city of West Memphis purchasing, you know, the PPE, if, if y'all don't mind. I'd like to make a amendment to that. You know, because you know, the Good Neighbor Center, they do the bulk, they do the bulk of everything. It might come from a force, and people come to them, they go and get things for them. My, my suggestion, I was gonna see if, you know, we could up there about another ten in the PPE equipment, because we want to make sure we got pens and gloves and things too as well for our employees and that thing. So if we up there about ten. Maybe from twenties to ten thousand.
Well, let me, let me, let me inform you on this real quick, Mr. Puyan. Uh, the, uh, Good Neighbor Center is getting ten, and Hope House in West Memphis is getting ten. So that's twenty together. Are you with me?
Okay, yeah. But let me ask you this.
And the PPEs, actually, the PPEs is going to the, uh, to the public. All of our city employers now has access to masks and gloves. Matter of fact, I just gave, we had two thousand, uh, masks donated to us today. And I just gave Todd from the utility department there. So all our city employers have access to masks and gloves. So this is, this, they're actually, this, uh, approval one, but this appropriation was not going to city employer, because we have what we need. And if they ain't worried, it's because they are not worried, but they do not have access. Hey, let me finish going through the list real quick, if y'all don't mind. I had, uh, six thousand dollars to go on the Sure Collaborative, which is gonna help prepare, prepare food for our senior citizens. Where's gonna be eight hundred meals a day, Monday through Friday, for the next four weeks.
Tell me, who is that? Sure Collaborative? I've never heard of him.
That is Michael Thomas. He's, uh, one of our certified, uh, food suppliers here in the city of West Memphis. They do this food program. And they are, and they are right now, uh, receiving money uh, to do help for the students right now while they out. And then the last thing that was, was, the most important thing to me was the HUD told us that if we collaborate, we'll get an MOA with the, uh, Department of Health. We could partner with, uh, East Arkansas Family Health Center to make sure that we do, uh, citywide testing in satellite locations to make sure that our citizens of West Memphis, if you asymptomatic or whomever you is, long as you in West Memphis, you can get tested for the coronavirus. And, uh, East Arkansas has agreed to provide those duties for free.
Thanks. That makes me say exactly what you're doing. I, I feel a lot better about it.
Yeah. So, so what, what we doing right now, we feeding our, uh, seniors, we feeding our adults, we feeding our children. We providing the necessary tests, uh, for our cities. We, uh, providing, uh, the necessary assistance to individuals, as well as our small business owners. We providing our citizens with all the PPEs they need, and we helping our distressed and homeless population. With this seventy-seven thousand dollars that we are, if you all approve it today, we make sure that we're addressing anything else that we need in our city. And if you need more or another idea that's come up that HUD will reimburse us for, you all can bring up. We still have another half, another hundred and nine thousand dollars available uh, down the pipeline.
Mayor?
Uh, Mayor, um, you did say, I'm, I'm asking because I don't know if your answer was answered or not. Where, where can we get information on where HUD, where, what HUD is allowing with the money? Is this, is this coming from CBDP strictly for the COVID-19?
I'll tell you.
Okay.
Let me tell you what they told me.
Can we go and...
Well, let me give...
My thing is, I'm not gonna waste time with ideas if they're not gonna be concurrent with HUD allow. Um, once again, you know, I, as council, the idea was for us to get together and collaborate on what it is that we want to do for the city. But if there, if we're limited in that, there's no need to waste any time. So where can I get that information? Uh, so that I can know before I even come back to town, or you can...
Let me, let me, let me first answer that and say, you can get the information from Todd. I mean, not Todd, I'm sorry, from Paul, this first thing. Second thing is, like they told us Friday, it has to be COVID-19 related. And number two...
I understand, Mayor. You make that clear.
Okay, hold, hold, hold. Let me, let me, let me, let me finish, Ms. Hutchinson. And number three, the administration wrote this, uh, proposal to the legislators for you all to approve. And I asked the mayor, the mayor, the mayor and the administration. I brought this to the council for you all's approval and your suggestions, and everyone that gave me a suggestion and called me about it, I added everything I could. And like I said, the housing and the school supply, probably a little more, more in-depth for you, but the O two thing was canceled off. So it's for the administration to bring to all its legislators the idea. And I'm asking you all for y'all's help and support if it's something you all want to see on there. But it's the administration that brings that to the legislature for you all to press it or vote it down.
Counselor Monday? Uh, y'all, you know, I, I don't, I don't, I don't talk a lot, but this thing is serious, very serious to me. Uh, uh, we need to save a little bit of that money, that hundred and nine thousand dollars that we have left. We don't know how long it's gonna last. We don't know who we gotta feed, our, our seniors, our children. Uh, you know, the governor's talking about going back, opening up and everything, or fellow didn't want to open up. I don't see it, but that's, that's the decision to make. But, uh, but I want to keep the people that I love safe. And we need to hold on to some of this in case we have to feed our children and our seniors. Uh, the people that, they're going back to work, okay, that's, you know, that, that's what they have to do. But, uh, it's hit me real hard. It's got my heart real heavy. My nephew passed at two o'clock this morning, my oldest nephew. And so it's deep with me. And, uh, I, 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 you know, I've been trying to set the example. I wear my mask, I wear my glove. I got underlying conditions. I got heart, I got blood pressure, I got all these things going with me. I want to be safe, but I, I still gotta get out and go and do what, do what for the people of my city. And this is my city. I love it here. And I love all of you, and I want to keep y'all safe. But we gotta think about down the line. I don't believe it's gonna be over within, you know, two or three weeks. I don't. Uh, that's just my belief. And it's gonna be hard, and our seniors are gonna have to be taken care of. Uh, and, uh, that's what we need to do is try to take care of them. And the program that Mr. Robinson and, uh, that Mr. Puyan, they all have thought about, with the seniors and, and, and helping the people that's laid off work with their life bills and stuff, that's all necessary. Uh, we need to do this, and, and we need to stay together. And bickering over a, a little something, I, I, when I, when I say that, I'm, I'm not down on nothing. Nobody's trying to get done. I love the kids as much as anybody in here, and I want to see the kids do well in school. I think y'all know that. I volunteer with it every day. That's my thing. But we gotta take care of our city. And, uh, it's hard, it's hard for me today. I, I, I had a bad, bad day. But I, but I love you all, and, and I want to see everything done that we care for our city. And I, I really do.
My condolences are with you, Brother Willis, and of course, we're gonna be praying for you. And I do agree with you. There's no telling, uh, how we may have to come back to ask for more, mighties for the Hope House, or for the Good Neighbor Center, or for the, uh, the people that are, what, what are they called again? Uh, Mr. Thomas is moved to provide...
Uh, so...
So I think we, I think that's a wonderful idea. Everything that you're saying is very poignant, Mr., uh, might, that we should hold on to some for the just in case. Shouldn't slip off right now?
I think in the Mr. Balla chat, I think Melvin was only asking for us to get some gadgets. You know, maybe she the guy, like, what's wrong with the guy and Paul out there?
Right. I think she was told to go to Paul, is that right? Right, I think she was told to go to Paul, is that right? To look at, look at the regulations?
What are you...
To get the link, just to get the link.
Yeah, yeah, that's all, I mean, that's what the whole thing is, just seeing what's being seen.
I mean, and of course, and there's no reason to keep spinning your wheels on something if you can't get the wheels out of the mud, just, you know. I do agree with that, I do.
Well, one of the things I'm sure Adam will do, and I'm sure Paul will follow up, is we'll look and see what other communities have done, have they thought of something that we haven't? Something that HUD has approved, we would definitely look at those and see how it benefits us. But I have to, whatever, to concur with Counselor Monday. This is the first wave, this is our first push to bring something to the public. Setting back in two weeks, four weeks, this may be a completely different picture. It could be much, much worse once we get all the testing done, our numbers could go up significantly. And you'll need to have a cushion to decide how you want to go from that point going forward.
I think starting out with these small amounts, like $10,000 and down, is a really beautiful amount to start with. So if there's no more discussion, I'd like to come with motion.
You color on.
Yes, sir. Counselor Kat?
I'm going to go ahead, even though I am technically back on the board with GNC, I'm not going to abstain from this vote. Uh, so I'm going to vote yes.
Counselor Crum? Counselor Crum? Counselor Harris? Counselor Holt? Counselor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Counselor Mohammed?
I'm going to compare with Counselor Cass, since I'm on one of the committees, since this is an emergency situation. I'm going to go ahead and vote yes.
Counselor Monday?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor Puyum? Counselor Puyum?
Yes.
Counselor Wiers?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, may I say something real quick?
It passed, yeah, go ahead.
Y'all, y'all, I had good things helped us together here. Uh, the reporters, scientists, everybody in the government out here, from little towns, big towns, to D.C. Said it come fall, this is, this is very, would be much worse than what we saw on this first wave. I think that it's very appropriate that you got these ideas, they need to be done like the officials do.
Yeah, uh, yeah, we've been notified of that, you know, I've been on phone calls every morning, uh, with surrounding mayors as well, with the governor pretty much every day at 1:30. So it isn't talk about it may get worse or the second string may be worse, but, you know, we got this cushion, like I said. Whatever, if you do have some more ideas, I'll take them back before HUD and let HUD make the decision, and we'll go from there.
Hey, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to address, uh, Counselor Hutchinson to consign. Uh, there is a director in the school district, uh, that his children do have to work. And some of them are in distress, so I would really like to see something that we can do to try to aid these children. And if we could, if we could come up with something, uh, maybe, as she said, a link that we can go in and we can create something that will fit for HUD.
That's, that's fine, that's, that's fine, I can, I can be taking it.
Counselor, if you don't mind, I will call you, and maybe you and I can kind of strategize to come up with some things. Uh, certainly, it will be after I look at the policy and guidelines, because I will not waste my time doing stuff. But thank you for, uh...
I will work with you, yes.
Mr. Murray, I just want to say you all, whatever you all, you and Ms. Hutchinson get together, that'd be fine. You all take, we take to HUD and find out, but I want everyone to understand, it ain't the mayor saying no, and I want everyone to understand. I'm not saying no, I took every program through HUD. They the ones saying no, not me.
But I understand that we find something to help these children.
The main thing is you got the guide, you have to have the...
I think once we look at the guidelines and see what's there, then we can, we can go from there. The important things is just looking at the guidelines, because we all want to help our children, most certainly.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome, my dear.
If there's not anything else, can I understand a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, bye. Approve.